Good evening, Bellflower. Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, December 11, 2023, at 7:04 PM to open session. There was no closed session for this evening. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by myself and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Elizabeth Oba, our Director of Planning and Building Services. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your greatness and your goodness. We recognize your greatness and your presence among us this evening. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We are so fortunate to have you. We're thankful for our first responders, for our military, those who serve our country to keep us safe. We thank our medical professionals for keeping us healthy. We thank our wonderful staff for keeping the city going and very progressive. We thank our residents for being active in our community. And we thank our city council members for giving their best to make the city the best it could be. As we gather tonight, please give us the wisdom and guide us so we can make the decision that's best for the city as a whole. Give us the perseverance, give us the clarity so that our decisions be made to the best interest of our residents. We ask all this in your mighty name, and together we say, amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Oba. Mrs. Oba. All right. This is a very exciting evening. Thank you so much for coming to this meeting. We have a nice, nice audience tonight. And so, the next item is the... We will conduct the nominations for the mayor. Now turn this, turn this over to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Nominations are now open for the office of Mayor of the City of Bellflower. Nominations do not require a second.
I'd like to nominate Dan Coops.
Vice Mayor Dan Coops.
Second. Councilmember Coops has been nominated and seconded. Hearing no further nominations, nominations are closed. When I call your name, please state aye or no. Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Coops.
Welcome, everyone. I want to thank you all for attending tonight. We're always glad to see a good crowd come out, and this is your house. You're welcome all the time. So anytime we have a meeting, you're always welcome here in our city hall. And second of all, I want to thank my colleagues for having the trust in me to serve as the next coming year as your mayor. I'll try to live up to all your expectations. I've done it before, and hopefully we can continue to work together for the betterment of our city. There are some folks here tonight that I've invited in anticipation of what could happen. And I've got my brother here, Darrell, who came from Upland, and his grandson Drake are in attendance. Also, my son Jared and my other son Brent and his wife Lindsay, my new daughter-in-law for about a year. And my five-month-old grandbaby didn't make it because we didn't set her schedule. And as you know, if you've got a newborn, you don't want to mess that up. We already did that for the tree lighting, and we're not going to do it again. And we're... So Jared and Brent and Travis is here, of course, with my other daughter-in-law Kirsten, and their three children Savannah and Austin and Colton. And so I just wanted to make sure that they saw something that their grandfather does and their father does, and a little history being made in our, in our family. I got to reminisce a little bit with you. My family, the Coops family, came to California, more specifically to Bellflower, in 1941. And they left the farm broke, came out here, just like the book, The Grapes of Wrath, with the Joad family. They didn't have much of anything, a 39 Chevy, and that was driven by my father. And they landed and lived in a tool shed on Ramona Street for the first two years, so they got enough money to have a deposit on a place to live. So it's really cool for me to have roots in this town that go back that far, but more importantly, to give everybody hope that you can try to work through your life in such a way that you can someday become mayor. So I'm always sympathetic to those that come in our city that may not speak English, because my grandparents didn't speak one bit of English. Until the day they died, they spoke Dutch. And as a result of that, we're all immigrants. And Bellflower is a great blending of all kinds of constituents in this town, and I'm always sympathetic to that because 80 years ago, that's where we came from. But I want to also mention that the love of my life, the lady that I've been married to for 49 years, who demonstrates to me what true love is every day, my wife Judy Coops is with me, and I couldn't do this without her support. All of us have spouses that we depend upon to be able to maintain some semblance of order when we're doing city work. The trick has been, especially when you own a business like I have had and Ray Dutton has had, that we dream of having our own business, and our wives work with us diligently. Don Dutton's here this evening. And then we go into city work, running for city council, and then they're left to sit with the business that we created. And so we're always sympathetic to that, you know? How many dreams do we have to have? But we always need support in order to accomplish them. One of the things that I'm cognizant of, we've had a great city manager for the last 12 years in Jeff Stewart. And he's decided to retire on the first of the year, so he'll have one or two more meetings, and that'll conclude his service here in the city of Bellflower. But he's leaving on such a high note. When you looked at our finances, when Ray and I got on council, and Sunny as well, it was rather, rather dire. City employees were asked to take a 10% wage decrease for a year or two. We restored all that stuff. We had little or no reserves. We were in the hole every year as we tried to operate. But through the city council's cohesiveness and the leadership of our staff, we've established some things that have created income streams that should go on for quite some time. So we have a new city manager. We'll start with Ryan Smoot, who we have, looking forward to him being our new leader in staff level, and he'll begin work on 3rd of January. We are... We continue to make the city better. So what you see now is an improvement from what you saw several years ago, but we're not stopping there. We have all kinds of things in the back of our minds to make the city even greater than what it is. There was a time when, when I first got on council, whenever we'd go to a meeting where other cities were involved, Lakewood, Paramount, Downey, the surrounding cities, we were always kind of like the one-legged stepchildren. No one ever thought we had much going on here, and why wouldn't we do more? The tables have turned. Now they're coming to us and saying, how did you get Golden Corral? How did you get an In-N-Out? We've got Sonic Burger coming. We've got some really cool stuff, and we've always had great parks, we've always had great streets, but now we've concentrated on the commercial parts. And it's proven to show that the surrounding cities now look to us for our leadership and our ideas, and that's really been a treat for all of us to be put in that position. But as we continue to work together, and I appreciate you all being here tonight, we'll all try to make Bellflower better. That's the only reason why we serve here, is to try to make Bellflower better. And I was taught many years ago by an old gentleman who owned over 1,000 apartments here in Bellflower. His name was John Nisser, and he said, "The only reason we're put on this earth is for one thing, and that's to help each other." And so that's been my mantra forever. What else are we good for? We need to help each other. And by doing that, we have a better community, we have a more cohesive community, we have a safe community. And with that, I want to thank you for all trusting me, for having the chance to serve as mayor again, and together, we'll continue to make Bellflower a better place. So that's my statement as we begin. And turning to the agenda here, we had the invocation, we had the pledge, we're at ORE Organization. And now, Mr. Stewart, let's introduce public comments.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we will need to conduct...
All right, we're going to have another election here. All right, we need a Mayor Protem. That was a seat that I just vacated. And I'm going to be so, I'm kind of like, I'm going to do it all this year so we don't need a Mayor Protem. That's what I was going to put that on. So anyway, we now are going to receive nominations for Mayor Protem.
I'll nominate Ray Dutton.
I'll second the nomination.
Hearing no further nominations, nominations are closed. When I call your name, please state aye or no. Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I have nothing but respect and admiration for my council colleague, Dutton. He has led the city greatly for more than 15 years, but in the spirit of rotation, a longstanding tradition, and the hope for representation, my vote is an unwavering no.
Councilmember Santinas?
Yes.
Mayor Coops?
Yes, aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ray, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'd like to say thanks for trusting me. This is... I remember when I was one of the new guys up here. This is my fifth term, and I remember getting here, and just as Mayor Coops has said, we didn't have much in Bellflower. And if everybody can think back 20 years ago, there wasn't a lot. And I was talked in to this job for what people saw in me that I didn't see in myself. And it took me a few years to find my way, but I knew I could make this place better with help from a good team. As the mayor has already addressed, is, is what we started was an economic development program. We've already had great parks, we had good public safety 20 years ago, but we had a deteriorating downtown. We had empty storefronts, dirty windows on the storefronts, and we were able to turn that around. Now we have a whole set of other problems with our transient people and people with mental health issues, and we're trying to get a handle on that. We haven't forgot that. We know there's a better way, and just like we turned around our economic development, we want to turn around society and public safety too. And we're, as a team, we're working on it diligently. As you're aware, as I do respect Victor Sanchez, we have differences. And this is something that was started when Victor chose to have somebody run against Sunny Santanas. And so there's animosity here. He actually tried to take Sunny out during the last election. And with that, Sunny knows, Dan knows, we all know, he got caught, and that's the animosity that you're seeing here tonight. Hate to bring that to the dais. We wanted to keep that under our hats, but now it's out there, and everybody knows. But anyway, it was unmorally the wrong thing to do. And with that, we want to look for Bellflower to be a better place. We have all dug in here. You saw what the last 20 years have done to this town with my tenure up here and my colleagues. We all pulled the same direction, and we will make Bellflower a better place. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. All right, now we'll do Mr. Stewart, public comments.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Now is your time. Please come forward and announce your name, and please sign the register there. So, and we're recording this, so speak loudly and clearly so we get the minutes right.
Hi, Esther. I've already signed in. You mentioned that we want Bellflower to build back, to be a better place. There is something on the agenda called Build Back Better. Build Back Better Agenda is not making Bellflower a better place. And I'm referring to the 15-minute Smart Cities, which I've researched, and have a serious agenda for the United Nations One World Government, World Economic Forum Agenda, which will, are setting us up for, and are different zones, so that for, if they want to establish a climate lockdown or some other kind of agenda lockdown, they're going to be able to surve, constantly track us and survey us with the cameras on, and I already saw one today, it's already up there on the light post, that they're going to be constantly tracking us. And this is not a good agenda, and I would like to do whatever I can to stop this agenda. It's a Build Back Better Agenda. It's on the United Nations Agenda and the World Economic Forum. And I have sent you emails for that, with that information, and I will be trying to contact each of you personally to have, because you may not be educated, or you may not understand all the ramifications of this 15-minute Smart City, which is another word, AKA for digital imprisonment. And they also, this also includes the money system, and it has quite a bit of, it includes quite a bit more in that agenda. And I would like for all of, all of you to understand it, and all our Bellflower people, because of all the people that I've talked to in Bellflower, they didn't know that we even had this, that we were even pursuing a 15-minute city. And they hadn't been informed. They say they hadn't been informed. I said, "I don't remember voting on it. I don't remember being aware of it." And so I'm going to do whatever I can to inform all of Bellflower and to let us know what all the ramifications are, because this is not building a better Bellflower.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you speak, I think there was an email sent to about this subject matter, and just want to make sure that it's entered into the records.
Thank you.
My name is Carolyn. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to speak about the 15-minute city, Bellflower Connect, which is a misleading name because it is meant to separate one community from other communities. When was this put on the ballot for the residents to vote on it? There are plans to spread the 15-minute city plans to all cities in this country and around the world. It's part of Agenda 2030 to establish a one-world government and control every person on this planet. Please cancel all of your plans for the 15-minute city, and I have a brochure that, that you can get later.
Anyone else like to come forward and speak to the council?
Hello, my name is Susan. I'm here to voice concern about the implementation of the Bellflower Connect development. Scheduled to go live in 2024. It was mentioned that Bellflower Connect is a 15-minute city, a pilot to improve digital connectivity across all socioeconomic groups in the city. In reality, this data infrastructure is a closed network, as mentioned in the November 27 city council meeting. This closed network grants the city, not the individual, access to information, information, and is, and is filtered by the city to the larger population, which is against the First Amendment, what was promised in the First Amendment, which is free speech. Now, the blocking of free information does not allow people to choose how to live, where to work, and where to purchase things. I want to remind the council, it is your duty to uphold the liberties promised to the citizens of this nation, the concept of natural law as promised by the Ninth Amendment, which states that the Constitution does not diminish these rights quoted in the Declaration of Independence, which is, quote, "That people can assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which law, the laws of nature and nature's God entitle them." So this, Brea can, sorry, this Bellflower Connect is an endangerment to those natural laws, and I am requesting that the board dismiss this pilot because it is not good for the city or for the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Mr. Azavito?
Dan, thank you. Congratulations for becoming mayor. Ray, Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
I know all the council members, you guys are all doing a great job. Dan, I'm almost as close as you are. My grandparents got here in 1942. So the Azavito and Cleveland family have been in Bellflower ever since then. I think you guys are doing a great job. Jeff, it was great doing business with you. I'm sorry to see you leave. I hope the next guy is as good. I know for a fact that, Dan, when you say the city's better, I can attest to that. You guys are not 100, you're 1,000% better than you were 25 years ago. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Dennis. You're always welcome for those kind words.
Yes, my name is Joette, and I've stood here and I've listened to all of you be happy and pat yourself on the back and say that this has become a great city and you're working on getting a better one. I don't know how anyone can sit there and say, turning Bellflower into a 15-minute dumb city is going to do anything for the city of Bellflower. This is a CCP-style housing, and it literally clamps down on the rights of people who are living within this so-called smart city. And I'm going to read just a few things of what one person had to say about it. "Connect 15-minute city entails full tracking of your every move with facial and license plate recognition, using hidden cameras everywhere." I don't know how that's anybody's idea of a perfect city. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. No freedom to travel. Can I say it again? No freedom to travel. You have, what, 15 minutes that you can just barely get out of the city? And that's it? You're allowed to come back in? Now, I don't know how anybody with a straight face can say that this is making Bellflower better. This is destroying Bellflower. And I don't care what you do for the storefronts down in the, the city that have become destroyed, that you have built up again, and what you do for the homeless. You put this city in Bellflower, and it will be the end of California because it won't stop at Bellflower. And it'll be the end of the United States because most definitely, people, the Communist Parties that are pushing this awful, awful situation aren't going to stop with just Bellflower. Now, I know Newsom is in part with them, and anyone who serves Newsom has to have their head examined. But you sit there and you say that you care about Bellflower and how much you want it to be the perfect city, then you should be the ones saying, "This is garbage, and it's got to go." No one in their right mind is going to vote for it. Has it been voted for? Has it ever been on the ballot? Is there any citizen in this city that's going to say, "This is okay, and I'll give up my rights to be in this city?"
All right, your three minutes are up, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Ms. Palacios?
Hi there. Happy holidays.
Missed you.
This is not my thing. My thing, you know?
No, your crosswalks and raised sidewalks.
I'm sorry?
Your raised sidewalks and crosswalks.
Yes, I'm that person. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
This is out of my thing, you know? Thank you for the flashing lights. I just wanted to say it has been a huge help, and I'm continuing to do some other things in my community to keep things safe. So that's why I missed the last four meetings.
All right, well, you're always welcome. We always enjoy seeing you.
Thank you very much. I know Mr. Public Works guy.
No, he's probably on your Christmas card list.
Yes, you know, I know it's not a 100% thing, but I actually bought yellow-green neon tape for the wheelchairs and the walkers for my neighbors so that they can be more seen. And I'm doing other things. I have been patrolling. And, you know, we had this fatality. They flew through Bellflower. I saw the video, and the actual live thing, and crashed over the line, killed whoever was, didn't make it. But they flew through Bellflower. I know we have a safety issue, and we have the homeless issue. My thing is advocate for the homeless, domestic violence, abusers, that. It's not this. Now, I'm concerned and interested in hearing today, and I hear no animosity, and I think everybody should have a voice. I hear no animosity with anyone of you. I'm concerned now. Hook me up with somebody who can explain to me why we don't have elections for mayors.
We just did.
That's my question.
We just had an election for mayor.
I know, but the public wasn't involved in it.
They're involved in choosing the council, and then we choose among ourselves who the mayor will be.
Okay. I, I hope to get more clarity on that.
And it's for one year, it's not for life.
I know that.
Okay.
I see that now, because I've been coming.
And larger cities like Long Beach have a designated mayor, but smaller cities like we have here, and we all serve one year.
Okay. We need to continue to figure out how to keep the safe, the traffic issue. I don't know what we can do because we continue to have accidents all over the city I see now. And, you know, two Saturdays ago, the car chase was on the other block, so they were in Lakewood and I'm in Bellflower. But that was pretty close. I do want to thank you for all you've done for Bellflower. We do appreciate the things that everybody and your staff does for us. So I want to wish you all a happy holidays and more success into the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palacios. Anybody else have anything to offer? Hi, Priscilla.
I haven't been here for a while. So first of all, I wanted to speak about Jeff's retirement. It's been good working with you, Jeff, as a resident here, and I appreciate, at the time, the city council didn't want to deal with me that you would, so I don't know, I don't know where that's going to go after this, but...
It'll continue to be the same. You'll have the same relationship with Mr. Smoot.
Okay. He's been a good help, dealing with me, but anyway. So I wish you the best of your retirement, and thank you for everything you've done. Secondly, Mr. Coops, Mayor Coops, I would like to thank you for helping me with the situation next door to me. So I've seen a lot of progress then, since you got involved.
And it continues.
It, it has. So since you got involved in Lake... So since you got involved in like late June, early July, I think I've seen more progress there than the prior, what was it, eight months, nine months, whatever it was before. But anyway, so I appreciate you getting involved in that and, you know, meeting with the Assistant City Attorney and getting that taken care of. It's still a slow process, but we're seeing some progress.
I meet with Mr. Hockman at least once a week. And we discuss what has been accomplished. And the lady that lives there has actually had a change in attitude, which is so.
Okay.
We're good.
I know they're still hauling stuff out by the truckloads that happened last week again. But, so the next thing I'm hoping for is maybe a replacement windows. So that would be nice to kind of change the look of the neighborhood if we got rid of the boarded windows. But anyway, so thank you for all you do. Thank you, Jeff. Have a happy, good retirement and thank you all.
Thank you, Priscilla. Anyone else? All right, going, going, go on. All right, public hearings, Mr. Stewart. This is an annual.
Mr. Mayor, can I just address something about the public comments? I think in fairness to the rest of the audience today, you heard something about the Bellflower Connect that was started in May of this year. Bellflower Connect is a citywide Wi-Fi provided by the city. It's supposed to be implemented in two years. But let me assure you, it's purely voluntary. If you want to sign up for Bellflower Connect, you can sign up. If you don't want to, you can keep your Spectrum, your Frontier, your whatever carrier you have. So it's purely voluntary to sign up for Bellflower Connect. So we're not going to be watching you 24/7. It's a free Wi-Fi available to anyone who wished to connect to the citywide Wi-Fi. Otherwise, you have the freedom. So it's not CCP. That's the Communist Party of China. It's not, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also offer some words of support there for the previous mayor. It is, one of the reasons why we made that decision was because when we found out during the, during COVID, was that there were students, children in our community and families that did not have adequate internet to be able to do their homework, to do their classwork and things of that nature. So I just want to echo the support there for member Sunny. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. All right, we're ready for a public comment, I mean for a public hearing.
Yeah, this is a consideration of possible action to conduct an annual public hearing to consider whether the 5% utility users tax should continue in effect, be modified or repealed. And Mr. Hockman has a brief staff report and can answer any questions for the council on this issue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to be very brief on this presentation. I think it's been here over 20 years and giving the same presentation. So there's not a need in my mind to belabor. There's really three trends that I'd like to point out to you. The first one is, I just came to my mind that I think I've worn the same necktie for just about every one of these presentations in the past.
It's your lucky tie.
So I will need to modify my Christmas list and maybe for next year. More importantly, however, and moving along, I will refer you to page number three, where we're looking at the actual revenue that's generated from UUT. You can see from about the last 11 or 12 years that the buying power of the tax rate, of the tax revenue, has decreased because it's not kept pace with inflation.
Excuse me, Mayor, does the public have access to this? Can we show it on the screen?
I don't have a PowerPoint for this one.
In fairness to them, I think I'd like to show it to them too.
Yeah, well, you can put it on the overhead, can't we?
Yeah, you can do that.
It'll take a minute or so.
Okay.
All right, keep talking.
So what you can't see then is the revenue from the UUT since about 11 or 12 years ago has fallen below inflation rate. And so one may conclude that the amount of money collected is not unreasonable if it's not even keeping pace with inflation. So that would be one thing that's been a pattern throughout the last several years. The other pattern that's been in place, you can see, the reason we include this crime rate chart is very simply, the last major spike we've had in crime in Bellflower was in '93. And that was the time that the first utility users tax ordinance came into be. And ever since then, the crime rate has been substantially lower for that entire time. So one might conclude that there's a direct correlation between beefing up one's public safety services and a lower crime rate. And so the funding source partially being the UUT, we believe has merit. And staff is recommending that it continue as it has in the past. And that being the case, I conclude my comments and will answer any questions. We can back up if we need to to show that last. So that bottom green line is the revenue that's coming in from UUT. The pink line in the middle is one of inflation. And so again, for all those many recent years, you can see that that's been below keeping pace with inflation. So your dollar buys less each year. It continues. If you look at the blue line, that makes the situation even more dire, I guess, in that if we wanted to account for population growth in Bellflower and CPI, we would want to be up around that blue point, blue level. And of course, down there in the green zone, you can see we're far away from that. So again, that's why we would contend that the amount of money generated is not unreasonable, given those parameters.
All right.
So back to concluding my comments and taking any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Any questions of Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I just had one. What's the spike from the last four years, 20 to 23? Is, it started going up.
There would be two. Sure. And that, you can say that's a piece of good news, right? You can conclude that it's either more use or higher rates. And I think we can all agree, higher rates is the better choice, especially this last year. That's a big jump in this last year. And of course, that goes in keeping with everything else that's gone up. So that's the best theory we got.
Yeah, because, you know, it's been, you know, as we, over the years, watch it, it was on the downward.
Sure, yeah.
Down, 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 down. And then when I got the staff report, I see it going up at the end. It's like, wow.
Yeah, that's a piece of good news.
Yeah.
Long ways to go, but a piece of good news.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Victor? Nope.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to open the, make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Oh, without objection, that'll be the order. The public hearing is now open. If you'd like to come forward and offer testimony on this item, we're ready to listen. Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, so we got a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santanes, seconded by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Without more discussion, that'll be the order. All right, is your thoughts on this? Shall we continue it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the continuance of the UUT and fund a community policing program with revenues generated from the UUT.
I'll go ahead and second that.
All right, we have a second by Councilmember Sunny Santanes. Pardon me?
I made the motion.
And you made the motion. And we have a support by Councilmember Dutton. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Yes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanas?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, moving on. We have no ordinances. We have no consideration items. Moving on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull for discussion? Or have they got a conflict of any of these items?
Mayor?
Yes.
15G, I have a conflict with, with property within 500 feet.
I also have a conflict. I work within 500 feet.
And you're also at 15G, you're conflicted out?
Yes.
I'm conflicted out on 15H. I have a property within the 16302 Clark. So I'll be out on 15H.
Mr. Mayor, I have no conflicts.
Let the record show that Mr. Sanchez has no conflicts. All right, let the record show that Mr. Sanchez doesn't either. So nobody wants to poll any of the items? We're cool there?
No, we're cool.
All right.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Victor Sanchez, supported by Councilmember Sunny Santanes. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanas?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, council comments. Let's start with Victor. You have anything to offer tonight, Victor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, congratulations to you and to, as mayor.
Thank you for the support.
And to Mayor Pro Tem Dutton. Like to just, you know, I miss the tree lighting. I was at a wedding, unfortunately, but I saw videos, looked great. The Butterfly Garden that we all attended to, the grand reopening, was a lovely event. Really great-looking park, well done by staff. Just want to congratulate staff on both, on their efforts towards making that possible. And then also just thank staff for the holiday work that they've been doing. I know they've been busy with a lot of events on the Parks and Rec side. So thanks to PJ and his staff. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Ms. Morse?
I have nothing.
Mr. Dutton?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Santanes?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, congratulations to you and Mayor Pro Tem Dutton. And I do look forward to your leadership and all the projects that are coming, especially the next, the next year. And I just want to give a shout out to our Parks and Rec staff. The first time ever that I attended a children's Christmas party at Sims Park, it was well organized. Again, goodness to staff, there's a lot of activities. There's about 100, I think over 100 kids who signed up for that event. And they have so much activities. And my only comment while I was there is, I wish I had this kind of Christmas party when I was a kid. So, but anyway, the kids enjoyed it, especially, and also the parents enjoyed the event. It was at Sims Park. And you see the foyer, the room, the big room, the small rooms. It was full of kids and parents and it was well organized. Again, goodness to staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Santanas?
Santanes, with an S, right. I believe Victor and I are the only two that have, were actually born in the city of Bellflower, unless you guys correct me. There you go, so we got three over here. And.
All right.
As a majority.
All right, so, yeah.